Okay, folks, we will get this meeting of the Bridgeston City Council to order. Good to see everybody. If you would all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we're a part. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and fair and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, the clerk. We have tonight Jessica is with us because Karen has had a conference on city clerk. So just hand every clerk a duty tonight. Call the robe.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Luke.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Here.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
All right, we have all eight councilmembers here tonight. Welcome to everybody, it's good to see you all again. Item B is agenda approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Hines, seconded by councilmember Luke for approval of tonight's agenda. Further comments, questions, suggested changes, councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Under I, recess for public hearings, don't we have a public hearing tonight?
We do. So it should be, because you'll see it's at the very beginning.
Yes, make a motion to add 23 PCO1 as a public hearing.
Okay. Very good. So everyone understand the motion. It's because of the front, on the front page of the, there is a public hearing scheduled, but it wasn't listed back under item I, pub recess for public hearing. So we're putting it there as well. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. That motion carries. Any further comments or questions on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, if your approval, excuse me, approval as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries, your agenda is approved for tonight. We have one card in for public comment. Nancy LaPia. Nancy.
Mr. Quinn, he has a that I didn't expect, so Pat helped out by the house today to remind us of every changes in both detectors. And it's why I throw that out there for anybody listening. Um, let's talk about the well of Stormwater Project. First, I spoke about this on February 3rd, 2021, and hearing on March something or another 2023 to say that, to my knowledge, is 100% completed. There might be some kind of thing that I'm not aware of. Uh, over the winter, we did, it was a really large area around the new manhole where the ground was sinking. For once, it wasn't my yard. That has been replaced, we tried to dirt replace, act down, all of that. Um, so yeah, thirty, there was a hay, forty something, uh, but as of day and later, I think I just started removing things. So just wanted to give a sincere form of gratitude to all the council and all of the employees that, uh, helped us along with this. This was a project that involved eight different homeowners, uh, for the new homes up on Long. They moved their home April of 2022, 2021, and this will be the first year, spring, summer, fall, that they really get to enjoy their backyard that they recently purchased. Before that, they were probably two feet by two feet lush, and tingers coming off of those lushes, and of course, everything headed my way. So finally, they had a nice life that they can enjoy. And I know that they're also feeling very grateful as well for having it all taken care of, so we appreciate that. From what I'm starting all of this, and I cannot ignore, is our city and Julia Bryan Peterson. He was assigned to be the liaison between, uh, all of the neighbors and the city. He walked us through the entire, uh, temporary easement air, uh, situation, writing off on that, what that looked like, what that means, what can we expect in our backyard with our heavy equipment. And throughout the entire project, neighbors, uh, often called on him with a question or concern, and I hear he was always very receptive, uh, to that, and had the, uh, with some grit, or whatever the situation was. So, kudos to him, he really had the ability to almost sympathize with the business of his own yard, his own property, so we appreciate that. Just a quick, uh, shout out to two of our councilmembers, that the clock is wearing down on, Councilwoman Luke. I've never had a real opportunity or need to work with you. Uh, I've always thought of our conversations to be very uplifting and supportive, and I can always tell with your comments, I heard it well throughout. So you make these kinds of deal women. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Zimmer. I'm about to eat the microphone, you think? You're the conviction to people, that's for sure, and one of one. I can't thank you enough, you have a special neighbor for watching, always been there for our national night out. Goodness knows you've always been a protocoler, ready for me, especially during the project, and we've been up to the project. Um, I can't say that you're not going to be so long, take it out, we'll see how that works out. But I know all my entire neighborhood always appreciates you being there with us and, um, adding to, heck, you even pointed out that I really needed a street light, which is now there, so we appreciate that too. Um, then, and you've been serving the city of Bridgeston for a long time, so I for one appreciate that, thank you. And good luck and have fun on your new journey, whatever that may be.
Thank you.
All right, very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. We have no further comments or cards, so we'll go on to item F tonight.
Can I, for the time that I can make comments?
You can, sir, unless it's either a public hearing.
No, I have other, other issues.
Okay. Come on up.
I didn't want to need it, sorry, thank you.
Yes, give us your name and address, sir.
My name is John Karen, 11245 Oak Hill Manor. That's in Bridgeston. He's in, that's a joke. Um, we've got new houses down on P, so that should increase the tax revenue for the city. But, you know, we should be able to get more, more services, and I'll bring those up. Um, seatbelts, everybody in here, if you don't wear a seatbelt, you get a, you get a ticket, right? We got Bridgeston employees driving around in Bridgeston trucks not wearing seatbelts. Now, we all are paying for the, for the health and, health insurance of the city employees, so if they get smashed, we are paying for it. My point is, I gotta wear a seatbelt, so do I. Right? Okay. Uh, the, the exit from the Rock Road going south on Lindbergh, every time you go over, you get kidney damage. And I was wondering if there's some way you guys can push somebody's button to get them, to get that intersection soon down a little bit. I understand it's not Bridgeston's property. I mean, it's, it's the state.
Okay.
So I'm sure somebody in here can, uh, get on their, their case and get that fixed. And I'm, I'm looking at crime statistics on the internet, and obviously, everything on the internet is true. The, uh, crime stats in Bridgeston isn't, isn't as good as it could be. And I got some more things we'll talk about. What is the economic development plan for Bridgeston to fill up some of these open storefronts along the Rock Road? Is there an economic development program, plan? Nobody knows the answer to that?
No, sir, we don't answer our questions when you bring them up. You can come to the next meeting if you'd like to answer.
Okay. Um, and the other thing I would propose is other schools have done this. If you put it forever, you do not have insurance for your car. Again, we're paying for all of that. Let's assume they own the car, and they don't get their car back until they pay the toll fee, and they show proof of the insurance. You know, we all have to have insurance, and then we gotta have insurance for people that don't have insurance. That makes sense about most times. Uh, and the other question is, what is the response time for the police? If I make the call, how soon do they get there? And I saw, um, something on block cameras to help, to help chase and apprehend suspects. Is the block camera doing any good? Yeah, I, okay, that would be interesting to know how many crimes or how many perpetrators it's, uh, help arrest. The other one, I saw some, uh, political stuff in the mail today, the, uh...
Yeah, keep it, keep it just strictly on non-political stuff, sir.
It's, it's not political.
Okay.
Okay, let me, let me word it properly.
Yeah, you didn't word it very well, sir.
Not to start with. Okay, there's a, there's people to make sure the inspections are, that our houses are pretty and they look nice.
Okay.
Okay, um, I would rather have some more money spent on the police department. I don't care if your lawn's not mowed, as long as nobody's breaking into my house. I mean, we can have a poll here and see who likes mowed lawns next to order, order policeman. Um, to see, let me, and, and the, I saw a new policeman was going to get, uh, indicted tonight, congratulations, by the way. We need one policeman. Um, we've got, you know, here again, we've got very little, six or eight hundred thousand dollars. What's more important, a green fairway or another policeman, to keep our streets safe and to keep their, people safe? Almost done.
Okay, you got about a minute left.
I'll catch you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your comments are duly noted. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to item F, the approval of tonight, uh, the March 1st, 2023 meeting minutes.
Move with approval.
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for removal, uh, approval, excuse me, of the March 1st, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any further comments, questions, suggestions, or change? Seeing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries. Item G, we have several items under item G tonight. First off, we're very pleased to introduce our new police officer, and I'll have Captain Fitzgerald, who's filling in tonight for Chief Masadi, who's up in Washington, Virginia area at the FBI, yes.
Correct, yeah, uh, Lieutenant, congratulations from the Command Department.
Great. You want to call Tyrone up?
I'll be right back. And as deep in our tradition in the last year, we introduce our new officers. Uh, our newest is Officer Tyrone Easter. Peter Iris, uh, he's been probably back in the day, the football program over there again. He plays the football, and attending colleges, five U of, uh, colleges in Minnesota, at the World Walsh University in Ohio. He graduated the St. Louis City Police Academy, and he was appointed by St. Louis City in 2019, so they keep us for him here in Bridgeston. Uh, he has a lot of training in high control, uh, and I said, was it happily, this field trainer, uh, how it's supposed to be, or should we introduce him? He did a job.
Officer Easter, would you like to say anything?
Uh, I would try to comment, so I'll go and get to comment where you grew up and feel like you're about to play your game, so I would try to, I'm assuming you have the, the tradition of, yes, sir.
Happy to have you.
Go ahead, have you with us, Tyrone. Hopefully for a long time. We also have a proclamation tonight that councilmember Grimmer has asked to read. Very well. Do you want the other one? Try to figure it out.
It's, uh, it is my distinct pleasure, uh, to offer this proclamation from the city of Bridgeston, proclamation for Bill Westler and the Localite Newspaper, and I'm going to go through the wheres, because they're, they're all good. Whereas, the Localite Shopper newspaper has provided Bridgerton residents, among other citizens in the Bridgerton local news, announcements and ads for local business for the past 41 years. And whereas, the Localite Shopper printed in its last edition in February of this year, and whereas, Bridgerton resident Bill Westler has been the publisher, editor, and reporter for this newspaper for all 41 years of its existence, and whereas, Bill being a 1958 graduate of Whitner High School was the third person inducted into the Whitner Hall of Fame, receiving the Whitner Lifetime Achievement Award, and whereas, Mr. Westler has been an active supporter of North County communities, a recipient of the Overland Rotary Club Vocational Service Award, and a member spotlight from the Overland Business Association, and whereas, Bill, as a lover of baseball from his time on his high school team, was inducted into the Union Printers Baseball Hall of Fame and the St. Louis Amateur Hall of Fame, and whereas, the Westlers, Bill and his wife Jackie have called Bridgerton their home for more than 25 years. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Bridgerton that it wishes to thank Bill Westler for his service in publishing the Localite Shopper and helping to keep Bridgerton residents informed with news and events happening in their community, and be it further resolved that the city of Bridgerton extends its best wishes to Bill upon his retirement, and the hope that he and Jackie will have a happy, healthy retirement, as they spend more time with their three children, four grandchildren, and four great grandchildren. And that March 1st be proclaimed as Bill Westler and the Localite Shopper's newspapers' appreciation day in business in Bridgerton, excuse me, past this 15th day of March 2023. Bill, congratulations and thank you.
Glad you came up, Bill.
Then I had the occasion, of course, dealing with Bill on and off over the years, and I also had the occasion to meet him in a non-business entity, and he is just as nice doing business with as he is socially. So, Phil, thank you.
Phil, where's the issue around here? What we miss here is that we have no outlet right now for our police, I mean, that sometimes we want to call the media, which is what gentlemen pointed out, about the benefit of the truth, that I cannot, that's the truth. Lots in print, the whole call exists. We appreciate everything the whole family does, and we're very proud of Bill and Jackie as residents of the city of Bridgerton for these ten years. Bill, congratulations.
[music] Say something? Phil, I'll say if you were. All right. Well, let's just know how, uh, where we met, start. Ready to go? Go with the rest of the crew, and I've worked the community news for a while, and, uh, I graduated, I went to work for full time, and, uh, I, after 22 years of working for community news, uh, I decided that, uh, well, actually, the company closed down, they sold out the journals, and then I thought, well, I think I'll start a paper, which wasn't very easy, but I did. So we got started, and, uh, it was in the Overland San area, that's what's called the Overland Community News, and, like I say, I worked here for, uh, 22 years, and then I decided, well, I think there was a paper called the Bridgerton Report, and they, and they closed down, and I decided, well, I think I'll start a paper in Bridgerton, there on high. So, the last, uh, 22 years, I, I'm now here, and, uh, enjoy every bit of it. Uh, back years ago, my wife and I spoke, talked about retiring at the same time, and, uh, so I said, you mind if I just work a while longer, because I really enjoy what I do? She's a cheerful head, so I asked her the other day, I says, when do you retire? She said, 13 years ago. I did work a little bit longer than that, but, uh, we enjoyed it, we enjoy it here. It just so happened that, uh, with the virus going on, uh, my delivery service, they lost, uh, some men quit, and we had one pass away, and then I got a call from the delivery service saying that, uh, one of his, heck, other men was in the hospital with cancer, so he said, I can't do it no more, and I really had trouble trying to find somebody to, you know, to do the paper, so I decided, well, I'm going to be able to retire. That's what happened. All right. Thank you. All right. We wish you all success. Okay, then, your new officer, new staff, you would have a client.
All right, we have one other item under G, which is appointments, and that's the board of directors of the Bridgerton Northwest Community Improvement District. This is the Northwest Plaza area. You should have seen in the materials you received from the law firm, that we had a couple people whose terms were up and needed to be reappointed, actually, of the entire board. So, is there a motion? Does somebody have a, want to make the motion, we'll discuss.
Motion discussed.
Motion's made by councilmember Hood, seconded by councilmember Zimmer. Further discussion or comment? This is perfunctory, we have to do this every so often, keep these kids going. Councilmember Patel.
Yes, I'm with you, accept these, uh, names that were listed. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Looks like they're going to have a board meeting around the dinner table.
Pretty close to it. Further comments or questions? Council? All right, seeing none, those in favor of the appointments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries, those appointments are approved. We have no other resolutions, we will now recess for our public hearings. So we will call on Mr. Dryden to come up for this is a special use permit, ordinance 15-28, the incorporated property at 12712 St. Charles Rock Road. Mr. Dryden, raise your right hand, please. Starling's glad to tell the truth, the whole community, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please give us your name and address.
That great plan going out there with the Bridgerton 12355, that's over there, it's 3344.
Very good, sir. Proceed.
Thank you. I do have files with, uh, our list of exhibits for this special use permit, and I can read those to the record.
If you would, please.
So the exhibit included, the city could have included a copy of the report to the mayor and the council on planning zoning commission dated March 8th, 2023, a copy of the SAPP report to planning zoning commission dated February 9th, 2023, a copy of the planning zoning commission minutes from their meeting on February 13th, 2023, a copy of the site plan for the special use permit application, and by reference, ordinance number 70-25, the zoning order with amendments through February 15th, 2023.
So ordered, that all those documents be entered into the record of this public hearing. Proceed.
Thank you. This is a request to amend the special use permit, and this is for the expansion of the St. Louis Service Center, uh, service station located at 127012 St. Charles Rock Road. The request for the amendment to the special use permit is in order to add equal fueling pumps and canopy, uh, that will be able to service tractor trailers at the adjacent properties, the rest is 12712 St. Charles Rock Road. The property is in D3, travel and entertainment service district. This special use permit amendment went to the planning commission on February 13th of this year, uh, through our public hearing itself, the planning commission recommended approval with conditions by a vote of 10 to 0. A few, uh, comments about the property itself, uh, as it is dated, this property is adjacent to the QD to the north of it. It is currently, uh, it's, it's a hunched off, a lot, a lot of trees, other brush and overgrowth on it. Surrounding land use is include auto service and sale to the north of Clement Auto, across from St. Charles Rock Road, is a whole home community, and then to the south of that, uh, focused lodging establishment and restaurant. To the south of this property is previously a QT service station, convenience store, and then to the west is the, uh, formerly known as the Banker Farm, the property which was purchased by, uh, Bridgerton Landfill, which you're all familiar with from the previous, uh, approvals of the city grant. Regarding zoning, uh, the property is zone D3, is surrounded by D3 zoning to the northeast and south, the Landfill property to the west is zone M1, inspection. A few, a little bit of information on this project, so the QD service station, there were three special use permits approved, the original one in 2002, that was to establish a special use for a service station with convenience store. In 2011, it was amended, amended, in order to allow sales, packs, liquor. In 2016, it was amended again, and that was to expand the convenience store. On review of the proposal, uh, this is consistent with the future land use map, which calls this area to be used for commercial land uses. Uh, regarding traffic, uh, this section of St. Charles Rock Road is a St. Louis County right of way. The applicant hired CBB, a local firm, to prepare a traffic impact study. That traffic impact study, um, was approved by St. Louis County Department of Public Works. The study, uh, showed that tra, the traffic generation does not require any changes or improvements to the surrounding right of way, or inter, or intersections. They are proposing a new, and this is on the site plan, which I'll show, uh, later, but they are proposing a new entrance on the north side of that front property line. Uh, regarding parking, it will be in compliance with the zoning orders for parking, and the proposal will be cataloged in the running, the zoning, the same land use as the property itself, the expansion of it. Here's a summary of the conditions that were recommended and approved by city, I'm sorry, by planning commission. Uh, the first one made that the approved use is for the equal fueling pump expansion with canopy proposed. The second is that a landscaping plan will be required to be submitted for city approval. Uh, there will be additional trees required near the western property line, and that's the area close to the, uh, Bridgerton Landfill property that they own to the west. And then the third or fourth condition is a pretty standard, no outdoor storage, ref vehicles, tire equipment, et cetera, and the parking area on these has three of crash. Literally, paved surfaces maintained in good condition. The fifth condition, and this was something that, uh, really came out of the government planning commission meeting, was that no long-term parking of over 12 hours shall be permitted, and no abandoned tires, truck or vehicles. A few pictures, so this is from across the street, as you can see, is a very overgrown lot that's close down towards St. Charles Rock Road, that's the site right in the middle, the QD on the left-hand side. This is from a little bit further north on St. Charles Rock Road, you can see it in the middle of the, the image with the, the same station behind it. And this is from the other side of Banker. You can sort of see the, it's on the other side of the QD in this, in this picture, on the left-hand side, it's a, a former Banker farm. I've got the site plan here, I'll, I'll zoom in on it here, so you can essentially see the proposed layout, uh, the, so the truck would access the new entrance that's proposed, and then the, the, um, canopy is a little bit further to the left of there, there's canopy, so they'd be able to line up, uh, facing the left on the image, that'd be facing south, and then there's a, a line to the left of that, that's potentially a And then there's a line to the left of that, that's potentially a bar that they can pull to that hard park if someone was waiting behind them. There is a scale proposed to the north of the canopy, a scale with a few spaces for tractor trailer parking. Next to that, there will be some new retaining walls installed with, with our ground fences on top of them. There is underground detention proposed, as well as a new detention basin. As stated previously, the land, there will be a landscaping plan required. They did propose a small prop, prop access driveway between the existing gas station and the proposed expansion. That is not meant for tractor trailers, that is meant to be these are diesel pumps, there could be some passenger vehicles or pickup trucks that need to come with diesel. This just shows a little more technical from the utility non-transport vehicle. And this is the proposed elevation during the pump canopy. Is there any questions?
We have one. Councilmember Norris.
Mr. Dryden, where did the twelve hours come from?
So when this was discussed by the planning commission, I mean essentially when they started discussing, you know, what are the potential impacts of this type of operation, you know, there is a home to receive across the street, there are concern about noise. So it was essentially to prohibit any long-term parking of vehicles, trucks specifically, tractor trailers. So they thought, well, twelve hours, if someone did need to pull in and maybe park, it's completely, sometimes truckers need to, they thought twelve hours, okay, that would prevent it from being day time then, but, and just to come up with a number that would be able to hold them to it.
Is that negotiable? I mean, in her, in her notes, it says, it's a fuel stop, not a truck stop. A truck stop is where you would have your overnight and your facility. So, you know, if you're, if these are truckers that are coming in just to stop and get gas and move on, why would they need, is that just twelve hours for us to be able to have some time? Why can't we just do six hours?
Yes, the conditions for the specialty permit, these are just recommended by planning commission, so the city council, of course, has the authority to provide and then pass this on a given condition, if the whole council approves.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, in that, in that same sentence, it says, no extended idling shall be allowed. Extended is subjective, and I'm not looking for an answer, but I have the same concern as Mrs. Norris.
Sure, and that was, again, part of the planning commission discussion, they, they wanted a specific number on hard, and they didn't necessarily define hard idling. I think the line of statement here was that, well, if they can't park for more than twelve hours, that would at least limit their idling. They talked about it, I don't believe it's not come up with one. It could be something that's also amended by city council.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Revert.
See, there's not going to be any refills, oil changes, tire refills, nothing like that going on, strictly come up fuel, and then continue on with that specification, Mayor.
Correct, there are requirements in the parking ordinance that could, that's an activity on the parking. It should always be added as a specific condition, the council about the report, but it is grabbing the word.
Councilmember Grimmer.
I'd like to just kind of expound upon there, as the lay it on to P and T. First of all, the applicant went to great lengths to emphasize that they were having a fueling station and not a truck stop. And so the five spaces they provided were just as a precaution, if you had somebody maybe pulled in, was stuck by maybe a weather event or something like that, they would give them some amount of, of, I guess, refuge that they could take temporarily. But again, the twelve-hour idle period is very, very generous, probably not to be utilized, but you've got to set something there. But the applicant was very much aware of that, and, and personally, I don't think that they're going for the long haul people, the big truckers. They're probably going for these guys that are commercial, that maybe have two tanks, two diesel things like this, they have, they're not comfortable at a, at a, at a regular automotoring type pump, so they're going for that particular type of customer. So I don't think that, you know, the long haul truckers, they're going to be down at Love and places where they can take a shower, if they want to, or go in and get something to eat. There's no place, you know, where they could sit down and eat in this place or anything like that. So I'm thinking they're looking at a different market. They're going to get some of that as kind of an overflow, but that's not their primary, I don't think their primary objective. But again, not to say we shouldn't take a look at it, but I, I think they kind of know what they're doing, and I think they know what they've identified the market, they've done this before, so just to say what, what the discussion was and planning, so, thank you.
Councilmember Hine.
Thank you, Mayor. Zach, is there, did you say how many trucks at the lot would hold?
Five?
There's five parking spaces, and then of course you have the, if someone was fueling, and then there is room for a truck to pull off. So I think you could max out at a total of, oh, eleven, eleven trucks. Now, of course, that probably wouldn't be a regular occurrence, in that, that the maximum that they're holding.
I think the intersection is already too busy, and I just, I don't know if I'm in favor of the additional traffic that I can, just to turn.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sattell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, one that compares to this is the one like going on St. Peters, you know, this QT out there that's right throughout the interstate, it has extra stations on the side, I've stopped there before just for diesel fuel for my tractor before, but that's the kind of thing, I think you're right, it's right there next to our city, you got a lot of trucks, they're in on the Rock Road there. Not having enough parking is going to be a detriment for them, okay? So that's going to limit how many people actually want to stay there. With five parking spots, I think it's just for a hard weather situation. I agree with Councilman, Councilmember Norris, as far as twelve hours, I think that's kind of long. I think we can cut that to six or eight, just to make sure they have enough to recuperate a little bit and move on, okay? Otherwise, five spots, somebody else is sitting there lined up, waiting to get one of those open spots, okay? Yes, we could have a snow event, but the thing is, truck drivers, if they're any longer period of time, the bathroom facilities over here at the, at the regular quick trip is not going to handle truck drivers going in there trying to wash up right now, unless they're going to modernize the bathrooms as well, but I didn't see that in, in, in print work. So I think it's beneficial, it's not going to affect the intersection because the small gap means all the semis have to come in and out the same entrance, is that correct? You know? Okay, so it looks like there's a big extra turn, just to make the turn on that. What I do see is if the trucks are lined up, they may have trouble getting out because other trucks might be lined up to get in there if there's a, you know, a fuel bar and all, and this one, you know, twenty-five cents cheaper than somebody else, it can be lined up somewhere, and there's no place to line up traffic. So I, that could be a possible future problem. Are we going to make it to where they can be, a left turn's awful, and also in the left turn lane on the Rock Road, or a right turn only, or they can either direct, come in from either direction?
The, based on the traffic impact study, it was approved by St. Louis County, it allowed for both left and right.
So if we end up with like six trucks lined up to make a left turn there, it's all the way up to the intersection then. Right? Or at least blocking the, then next intersection, which is two trucks, going to block this other intersection right here, just to get in to the existing part of the QT.
They base all the, they base all that on projections, I think.
I'm in favor of having diesel, because we could use the diesel facility out there for some of the other local trucks, I think, but I think one thing we should try to minimize that twelve hours to a lower number, six or eight, if we can come up, you know, consensus on that. The other thing, I think this idling situation is kind of vague, I think we should match that to maybe half the amount of time we vote on, so if we say change it to six, idling not to exceed, you know, say, you know, two or three hours, because maybe you got to charge up your batteries. But if it's, you know, you know, below zero down to there, you know, or ten degrees, they're going to be idling, having all idling just because they're in their truck trying to warm up. And I don't know what kind of ordinance we have to say, hey, go shut your tractor off, you know, I'm just trying to use that as an example, but I think that could be a problem with, you know, the home park right across the street. Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dryden, I'm trying to understand the traffic flow, they're going to come in and out that one entrance and exit, is what you just said. They'll come up, make the left turn into where the pumps are, and then go up and around to come back out? So they're going to be crossing each other. What's going to keep them from going out the, the exit on the left into the, the regular existing QT?
One is the size, and then also the, that would pay no cost, because it's designed where they would use the same entrance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm team, I'm Bridgestone, building project manager for this site. We have your first is twenty-two fifty-five, Russo, St. Charles, thirty-six three three delivery.
Very good. Proceed.
Any one question, do you have any questions that you have on this conference? So if you would like to be kind of, the plaintiffs, I do believe that that twelve hour, because they wanted at least one contact with the owner, when you talk about long-term or overnight, those do become vague terms. The thing is, we go with long-term, that helps the threat of these people that comes in at six AM and doesn't leave until six or eight or ten PM, which is still the same thing, we really want to eliminate that. Let me kind of step back and say, we are the small town, we are not on a timed building, we are not adding any amenities, we're not adding a lounge, a sit-down area, or anything of that type. The, at the most, the building will just be updated on the outside to match all of the exterior. We're going to want to make sure that this two canopy matches the current canopy, as well as the buildings, so it's all cohesive and look as one. As far as that drive, we do not want any cross traffic from the tractor trailers. But if you look at the diesel bay that we are proposing, the tractor trailers will go through the middle, so we technically have three diesel bays there, but a truck can actually use the outside bay for them to fill up. And so when our other canopy gets congested, those vehicles that need auto diesel or diesel can utilize this, which is one of the reasons why we're students and have that extra there for them to utilize. We do have the five parks because, and really every time I go to that location, we already have tractor trailers that are parking inside the lot along the curb, and they're congesting up the lot we already have. So we're actually putting this in because we know that they're already there. This allows them to park, go and get their pizza, their pretzel, get their hot dog, and be on their way. We are looking for the short-term hauler, the guy that wants to go Kansas City to Indianapolis and wants to be home the next night with his family, he doesn't need any of those amenities, and he really doesn't want to go to the other larger ones because he doesn't need any of that, and they're the big fuels, we're the big, we're the small town. But those five parks are critical because again, we want to keep them in this lot, and there are federal regulations, and the federal regulation is eight hours. So I would like to suggest, if you do want to modify that twelve hours, we're absolutely open to that, but I would ask that it would be at eight hours, because there are federal regulations, if someone does have to pull off, we cannot for those regulations or to lose. The idling, the best way that we have to match it is rest is through noise, and noise ordinance is within the city. If there is an issue that they are idling and it is becoming a noise issue, that's usually the way we have found it has gotten pressed, because once they know that they're sided under that ordinance, they cut that truck really fast. So I think that's one of the reasons why there wasn't a time component to an idling, it would be really hard to gauge that, because we would literally have to have someone standing out there finding out how long they idle, and then they could cut it off and then start again fifteen minutes later, to that, and start that time clock. So we have found that the best way to control that issue is through noise ordinance, so they can sure that those are getting in force. Again, we have been truck turns, we do know that those trucks can make it in that lot. We have already reached out to our neighbors, the Bridston Landville, and working on working with them as far as what we can do landscaping-wise to add to that factory. Those truck parks are as far back as we can get them to keep them as far away from the residential area. But the addition of landscaping, that noise back there will get absorbed, absorbed through some of that landscaping that we're going to be able to put in there. So I hope I can address a lot of your questions, but if I haven't, I'm happy to address a little more than I can.
All right, we have a few. Councilmember Norris.
Thank you. Beating the dead hearts here, but I, you know, it is, I just want you to understand, I encourage business, but I represent and responsible for the citizens in the city of Bridston, so that's my, I'm just asking these questions. And I was, I just want to let you know, I was disappointed you didn't follow through with the twenty-sixteen expansion that you were supposed to do, so I was disappointed with that. And if the property's been tested, I guess it has, or you wouldn't be able to continue for chemicals or?
We are in all of that process, we just do the testing before, we actually finalize the purchase, I believe. And then we are right now trying to verify utilities, and so because of all the rush on that property, and we're having to get it all cleared before we can safely get anyone in there to really verify the water line and the other utilities on that property. So we are in that process.
Are you able to retain the wall?
We are going to have a retaining wall, working with the landfill, we might just reduce some of that, but we are in that process.
Well, you know, I am just really with that hours situation, you know, you indicating your notes, this is a fuel stop, not a truck stop, correct, as before. And that's just what I'm concerned, that intersection in that area is very, very busy, you know, and I'm just visualizing the truck coming down off the two seventy, coming across several lanes of traffic to get over to yours, so, you know, this is just, I'm concerned, because we had as a commercial, we got to cut through, you know, people coming down Baker and Blaster coming through over into our city and then go down, so, you know, to add more of the commercial, big trucks, I think are going to add some issues, so. But I would like to go to eight hours, so if that would be any, so you would be agreeable with that?
Yes, we believe that that is fair, and we have just been following the federal guidelines, that as part of the ordinance, that we can reference the ordinance on the signage, so that they understand that this isn't just our rules, it's the rules that is in that four five city.
But, you know, and I, really with the truck stop, I said, you know, if he's a trucker that are in the business, why would they choose this anyway, if they're going to have to stay overnight, so. But, you know, if you can drop that, I could feel a little more comfortable, but, all right, I think I'm done, thank you.
Councilmember Sattell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ditto on that for the eight hours, I think that's a strong emphasis as far as the support that's been there. Talking about traffic, is there any possibility that you look in to making this connection, go behind the other current QT and connect over to the banker lane, to where they could actually, the trucks could come out at the spike, the light as well, to where you could actually not just have everything coming in, not one entrance for trucks, but if they went up along the backside of your existing building?
No, because there's a, there's a.
Not enough room?
Detention pond, there's a detention pond behind the store, it's barely even.
And it could be enclosed or, and put on a pavement area right there? It would seem like that would make a better flow for, for truck traffic going in and out, instead of going up, having to make U-turns on, on your spot and waiting out the exact same entrance without going through that twenty-foot opening for pickup trucks?
One, I know that we can do that with the property that we have, we have to work with the landfill, where you have a backup there. Two, again, you have a significant drop of the detention pond, and we have had a full traffic study completed by both, by CBB, some reviewed by the city. It actually was reviewed by MODOT, because MODOT in the beginning says that, thought that it was their jurisdiction, and then after they reviewed it, then they came back and said, oh, sorry, this is actually county. So all of the agencies that we had worked out, it all concur with the findings of the traffic study, that, that a full act of there is warranted in this case, and again, I can't build something, and we would build something that wouldn't function. And this is not going to be for those guys that are filthy, it's, I highly doubt at any point, and I did think we could actually go twelve, because you got a truck sitting at hell, it's a game.
Yeah, I have seen trucks on that lot, so maybe you can direct them to come around and only come in off the Rock Road.
Yeah, we need to do that potentially with the climate, I believe.
Because I'm thinking if they don't know that they have to come in off the Rock Road, they, oh, here's an opening, I can squeeze my truck right through that 20-foot opening.
Oh, good. We're going to have time as opposed to that.
Okay, and then also over on Bank of Lane, so they're not cutting in, and now they've got to get out.
Oh, you're talking about, okay, yeah, we could.
Which is really currently coming in.
Probably. The only truck that I'm telling you will, which still would have to use is our own.
Well, true, true. Yeah, your fuel truck. Yeah. All right, that's right, thank you.
Councilmember Heinz.
Thank you. I, I thought it was six or seven years ago you were here before. So, why not do renovations?
What happened? So, um, just like all good companies, sometimes we make decisions and then sometimes have to take it back, take rest. At one point, it was kind of decided that we would change all of our stores and, um, with the new, uh, prototype that we had. And this Bridgerton location is actually one of the biggest stores we have in that old, um, prototype, so to speak. So, at one point, when we, we looked at how things were going, it was decided that these bigger stores still function as well as these new ones because it's where footage we were able to utilize. Um, so this was one where the biggest issue here was the parking. And so we did go on and expand the parking in this location, plus, to be honest, love came in. And they actually cut into some of our volumes that we were drawing at this location. So, at that point, we had to reassess what was the best business decision for this location. This location still does really well. Um, and again, we believe that there's an opportunity for the short-term haulers, that for the local haulers that don't want to have acres and acres to navigate this distance effect of life that they're going to want to utilize.
Thank you. Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, just out of curiosity, how many similar operations, these fueling stations, do you have adjacent to QuickTrip locations here in this area?
So, the one that we referenced down the same tier, that's technically a travel center. So, we don't refer to it as a fuel stop because it's a full-on travel center. Again, that location doesn't have showers or any humidity, but it does have a much, much larger area that I think has, can park approximately 50 to 70 trucks.
Something similar to this.
But something similar to this, I believe that we have, um, I want to say less than 10 actually built, but we have several, because this just rolled out, um, I want to say a year or so ago.
So you have 10 operational.
I believe that we have somewhere between, somewhere between 5 and 10 already operational, and we have probably at least another 25 or 35 in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor, just real quick, I had an idea for that, that 20-foot, yeah, sorry, the 20-foot, um, opening. Perhaps it could have those, those metal overthings that are so tall so that a truck can't fit.
Clear as far.
It's got their whole gas, so that a truck can't fit through there.
Okay. We can definitely consider that.
Councilmember Norris.
One more time, um, I've located one of, one of these facilities, if you can see it.
Fuel stop?
Uh-huh.
I think there's one in Tulsa. I think Tulsa was.
And that was there?
No. And right down, the only one, we're looking at a prototype in the metro area, but, again, for us, this was, because we had to get additional property, we went on this board with this one, and we believe that it's going to alleviate some of the congestion areas we have in our current law.
No, I can't do a road trip.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I find out one.
All right, let me know.
I see no other further questions. We appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open it up to the audience. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor, in favor of this? Please come forward. Melissa.
Melissa, 21755, Dan Comente, Bridgerton 63044.
Raise your hand, okay. Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I live in Spanish Village. I travel that route every day, going to and from work, coming down Fender, getting on the Rock Road, going to the QuickTrip. And the number of large trucks that are parked in there, and particularly in the morning, makes it very difficult for, you know, little cars to maneuver around them. I am totally for having a separate fueling station for large trucks. I don't believe you're really going to increase the amount of traffic that comes in and out. I think you're really going to improve the flow because you don't have these large trucks coming into a gas station that's really not conducive to large trucks. So, I, I think this would be great, and I think it's going to alleviate a lot of problems in the, um, car side of the QuickTrip. So, I, I live there, I know, I deal with it every day.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else in favor, in favor? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition, in opposition to it? Mr. Penson.
Mike Penson, 11420, hold, thank you all for the vote.
Raise your hand, Mike, I got to swear, you saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Definitely.
Thank you, sir, proceed.
The thing that stand out is the gentleman one, the gentleman sitting over here in the white shirt, having to sit here, hopefully tell you, whatever time you set is not enforceable at all. And I can enforce it, if it's $8, $10, $12, whatever. It's going to be strictly on your own time to do this. Now, I agree with this, which is hell, that the rear entrance would work perfect to get the traffic. It's concerning me pulling out. Pulling in is, is a little bit of a problem, but pulling out is going to be, make sure traffic's well protected, in that I feel that she must have retention there, there, and he changed it to detention, which, when we're gone, sort of accomplishes the same thing, and you can drive the truck right over and get the trucks out, and that way they exit at the light, which is the light signal. So, um, that's, that's my feeling, and, um, I, I think the agenda would be a mistake having the trucks in there, especially with residents across the street. Anybody that's ever heard of a truck running, and it's just very loud, especially for these residents, it's summertime, the doors are open. And the other thing, if you want to know what's going on, you have the bus down Highway 370. And I parked a car on the, on the, on the road, this, you're right. They parked a road right there along the highway, because of, because of law, they have to stop, so they, they can't drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing and move on to the rest of tonight's agenda. Thank you. Ah, we have item J, permits waivers in the field, we have a sign variance, councilmember Heinz.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, motion for approval of a, uh, sign variance for the foot walker located at 973 Northwest Plaza Drive.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Heinz, seconded by councilmember Luke, for sign variance for the foot walker at 973 Northwest Plaza Drive. Councilmember Heinz.
At the design review board meeting last Tuesday, which was March the 7th, uh, the board forwarded this application with favorable recommendations to city council. Uh, they currently have two signs, excuse me, on the building that faced east, and there's no exposure for their name, uh, south, north, or, or west. So, I think this addition to the, uh, south elevation of the building, uh, is well deserved, and I'm in favor of it. I'd like you to join me in approving this for them. Thank you.
Very good. Countess the questions from council. Seeing none, the court will call a roll on the sign variance.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Luke.
Aye.
Councilmember Norris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hood.
Aye.
Councilmember Patel.
Aye.
By your votes of eight to nothing, you approve the sign variance for the foot walker at 973 Northwest Plaza Drive. We are down to item N, consideration of new bills, Bill 6368. Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of Bill Number 6368.
Second.
Councilmember Grimmer has moved for the first reading of Bill 6368, seconded by councilmember Patel. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying motion carried. Councilmember Grimmer.
Bill Number 6368, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgerton, Missouri, application number 23-PD-01, amendment special use permit number 16-2H to incorporate property at 12712 St. Charles Rock Road into use by the adjacent QuickTrip located at 127000 St. Charles Rock Road to expand facility by developing the property with diesel pumps and a canopy that would accommodate tractors, trailers, and large trucks. Move to table Bill 6368.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel to table Bill 6368. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying motion carried. Bill 6369, also councilmember Grimmer.
That's move for first reading, thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of Bill Number 6369.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for the first reading of Bill 6369. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Staining? Motion carried. Councilmember Grimmer.
Bill 6369, in ordinance of the city council, city of Bridgerton, Missouri authorizing mayor and the city clerk to execute unit agreement that's attached here to with M&amp;H Concrete Contractors, Inc., for the concrete pavement replacement associated with select streets in the Bridgeway subdivision in an amount of $832,135, and an additional work in the amount of $145,000. The project budget includes a contingency in the amount of $20,000. Move to table Bill 6369.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel to table Bill 6369. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carried. Bill 6370, councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of Bill 6370.
Councilmember Luke has moved for the first reading of Bill 6370, seconded by councilmember Heinz. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carried. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgerton, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement in the form substantially attached here to with Horner and Schifrin, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $25,000 for professional design services associated with stormwater projects at 11676 March Plain Lane and 4144 Bridgerton Meadows Court. Move to table Bill 6370.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Heinz to table Bill 6370. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carried. We are down to the attorney's report.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Councilful communication, we'll start with councilmember Hood.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is, um, the last time for you before the election takes place, and I just want to wish everyone, you know, feel welcome to reach out to the room.
Very good. Councilmember Norris.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I got a couple of questions. Uh, is, is any news about that daycare that, you know, started at the old Vantage on Pepe? Um, and also Pizza Hut as a default, the hall center? Uh, someone can give me an answer if, if, you know, can. Um, and then I want to congratulate our new officer, Tyrone. I'm, I'm so happy that we're getting new officers. Uh, people don't understand that the, uh, it is very difficult. Uh, the pool is the same pool that every city of Bridgerton has officers. So, uh, we are very fortunate with our benefit package and, um, that, uh, our officers are wanting to come, the people are coming here calling for us. So, we are very lucky. Uh, congratulations to Bill Lesler. Uh, I am very sad because this leaves such a void in local communication. Uh, it will certainly be, uh, I mean, the old-fashioned print, uh, again, as you mentioned, social media sometimes is not, it's good and bad. Uh, I do want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving Day today, and I do have a shield, uh, I'm a member of President of the Quanis Club, Bridgerton. We are having our annual fundraiser, April the 2nd, uh, the Quanis Breakfast at the Bridgerton Community Center. Uh, I do have tickets, if you would like, you'd go for the same price, stand by at the door. So, uh, I hope to see you there, April the 2nd. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, thank you, Mrs. Lepia, for your nice comment. An update on the status of that project. And I, good luck to all of the candidates running for your respective positions. That's it, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Heinz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, audience, for being here, and, uh, candidates, although three of them couldn't make it till the end for some reason, are gone. Anyway, um, I've got a question. A gentleman brought up impounding vehicles, uh, from those drivers that don't have automobile insurance. Is that possible? And you can comment when it gets to your point, your, your seat, thanks. That's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. At the, uh, past, uh, P&amp;Z meeting, uh, this past Monday evening, uh, we have a request, we have a gentleman that wishes to, uh, establish or bring a business of selling, uh, four-wheel off-road vehicles here in the city of Bridgerton. Uh, they propose to locate in the old, uh, little strip mall just south of, on Lindbergh Boulevard, south of Whitehall, I think some of us refer to that as the old Value City location. Uh, it's going to be a kind of a two-step process. First of all, the zoning, uh, doesn't comply that use that he would have for that, he needs to rezone, so they've already started that process to, uh, rezone it to be new, and then it'll come forth for the necessary special use permit. But, uh, just to let you know that it's coming, we'll see it probably in the next couple of months coming up. And then, secondly, uh, I would like to, uh, as we all know, every position here in the city is contested. Uh, personally, I, you know, a little bit of a challenge, but that's all right. Uh, I just say it speaks well to the vitality of the city that, uh, we have contested races. Shows folks are interested in what's going on and interested in keeping the standards of this community, and so I'm just kind of happy to see it. Speaks well of Bridgerton. Thank you.
Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to, um, wish good luck to everyone that is running for office, and also I hear a lot of times people want to make changes, but they don't want to go out and vote. So I do encourage everyone to vote. Um, we don't have a huge turnout sometimes, but people are, you know, saying that they want to change this or change that. But the first part of that is going to vote, so I encourage everyone to do that. Please tell all of your friends that are complaining also to go and vote. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patel.
Yes, a few things, um, I think I brought this up to the mayor before, but, uh, some of, we're going to start a tall grass list shortly, but it'd be nice if we could kind of cover some of this, you know, tall weed. One of them along Lindbergh, that's, uh, right through by the Home Depot, where you got Lone Eagle going in right there. The weeds are still, uh, about five feet tall, it's also collecting all the trash along that area right there, along Lindbergh. So I know it's part of MODOT, it looks like Home Depot trims partway down the edge, but don't we have an ordinance that says you're supposed to go all the way to the curb? And so maybe we can get them to also go all the way to the curb, if you ever cut that grass there. The other thing I'd like to see if we can take care of, we've done before a couple of years ago, and that was clean the fence line, the weeds are like six foot tall along that fence, it's along long roads, it goes along the interstate, all the way over to, uh, Leonardo DRS's entrance right there. It's an ice shore along Lindbergh, it's an ice shore along the highway. We clean that up right there while it's just dead weed growing, I think it'd be beneficial instead of waiting for two months. Uh, with that, with that part, but, again, I'd also like to wish everyone, uh, that's on the ballots coming up this, uh, next month, uh, best wishes. It's kind of nice, this is the first time in probably 10 or 12 years that you won't have Scott Zimmer or myself on the ballot, so, you know, I hope we, uh, have some good turnout and, you know, we see some respect for things. Coming forward, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, um, yeah, thank you, Nancy, for the, uh, nice comments, I appreciate that. Uh, John Scaram, uh, thank you for getting up and talking. Uh, I could go over several of your items, and I agree with several of them. The irrigation, though, um, at the golf course, I want you to know that was a grant, the $650,000, and we only paid a minuscule amount of that, so it was pretty much a giveaway. And we are, the last couple of years, we've been working on, uh, putting more and more budget in for the police. We realize we want to keep our police, and we respect them, there's no, uh, defund the police here, I guarantee you that. Um, and I think the biggest problem, somebody mentioned earlier, I think Joni Norris, Councilwoman Joni Norris, mentioned was, uh, the problem is finding the police, um, um, we, we, we have some, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we still have a couple positions open, I think, so we're, we have the money, we have, we just have to find the right people and, and, uh, fulfill that, but I'd like to say that. Then the no license, that bothers me as much as it does you, just to, to let you know, to have people no insurance, no license, driving around with plates from 2020 or so. So, um, hopefully we can do more with that, but I've, you know, I don't, I don't know what to say on there. So, thank you, that's, that's all I have.
Very good. We'll go into staff reports. Mr. Gunn, streets and public work.
All right, I'll switch out, I'll, I'll say tomorrow's concerning the daycare and the pizza, I know the kids probably, the location would have some issues with whatever you eat, and increasing the power of the electric. And the last thing I have is a quick reminder, with the election being less than three weeks away, uh, three things, one, political signs, you stay below eight square feet, I don't see anybody's in, I don't have a problem with that right now. Second thing is making sure they pick up their signs 10 days after the election, so otherwise they'll be calling you. And last thing, I'll just keep your signings out of the right of way. Usually what that's going to be is between the edge of pavement to probably a foot behind the sidewalk. City right of way, just keep your signs out of there. If there's no sidewalk, if you were used typically, um, four, five feet from the edge of pavement, that's pretty, pretty fair to do, so I'll just keep that in mind as we have, uh, three weeks left and we'll be done. Thank you.
Councilmember Heinz, his question.
Well, Mr. Gunn, uh, we forgot to wish Robert a happy birthday earlier this council week. Happy birthday, Robert, thank you.
A delay. Vicki is subbing in for Mr. King, who's not on vacation this week. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you, Mayor. To address your questions, our council, we, we of course welcome additional volunteers for free paying, and we can expect some people coming in offer in the form of social media petition members, our local group as well, like open call for anyone who's interested to contact Kate Cooper at the Recreation Center. We can push out some social media requests as well, I think she's working on that actually. As far as the training crew was, I apologize, we don't have to tell you that at this time, I'm not familiar with who we are in that process right now. Quick report from the first one, I would like to congratulate and thank Ms. Lesler and the Black Forest, who's been a huge asset, the first firm promoting our programs over the last 18 years, 5,000. We met open this week, the first game was played. We had 30 people attend this class, I approximately 30, thank you, the mayor, you and Mr. Grimmer, Trump, Trump and Grimmer attend this event, I apologize for that, thank you for coming to this floor speaker. And we are preparing for the Hattie Fire Department's year of program in the community of town. Thank you.
Very good, thank you for your report. Denny, would you like to give us a please report?
Yes, uh, an answer to the question about the vehicle, uh, the word in common, I guess, is the word in your definition, it sounded, we can't really take someone's car until they've made their ticket, so that would be, uh, against the Fourth Amendment. We tow cars on traffic signs trying to make an arrest, but you don't want to be punitive about it, it has to be something that's, you know, that gets us in a little bit of a jam. But, uh, they're exercising their, the guys are writing tickets, uh, we're in some grant programs for traffic grants, uh, we just opened up. Uh, personnel, we're, we had an officer just in the finishing of the process from Crete Core, and he'll be starting in a week or so, and another one, he's in the process, I think, uh, there's a sheet coming up, so I believe that took us one, the one chart afterwards, uh, which gives us the opportunity to start a, they'll do a promotional process in a while to promote it up with sergeant, to give us the ability to do that with the manpower, and, and thank you for all the support from council, everybody, we're able to, we're about hot enough to strength to be really close. Um, I have the in common question. And just, as, as I, we've got the work on the chaplain program, myself and, uh, Ted Lang, Long Years of Peers, program is able to tell him for officers, that officers support the officer social program, and we're going to plan to get some local chaplains to, uh, serve the department and, and that's what we're at.
Very good. We offer our condolences as well to the Herman Police Department on the loss of one of their officers, as you see from Captain Fitzgerald there with the black band across the badge, which is a symbol of when an officer goes down in the outline of duty. So our extended sympathy goes to the family and to the city of Herman upon their loss. Mr. Bookout.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that this is the time of the year that we keep an eye on state legislature, and, um, one specific bill that I want to mention, and you've probably read it in the paper, and it pertains to the appeal of, uh, probity tax and that impact on municipality that we have, one of the items to pay overlooked, but of course, there's been articles and some of the cities have weighed in, um, on how that would impact them. I think we're, we're in a similar boat to cities of air. Uh, it would impact us, nor the $2 million, we're trying to put a handle on what that exactly would be, but we know it'd be a significant impact if, if that were to happen, and I think that's the case for this municipality to propagate. Of course, Bridgerton doesn't usually rely on property tax. Here with the, it's, you know, tail tax is our primary revenue source, and of course, that would be a huge hit, so we're keeping an eye on that, we'll have a better number for you, uh, within the next week or so, and we'll keep you posted, you'll probably be reading about that in the press. Oh, yeah, Mayor, thank you.
Very good, something we'll watch very closely. Right, for my report, I was, oh, I'm sorry, somebody asked a question, councilmember Heinz.
That's right. I'll let you speak later.
Okay. Uh, I was privileged to join seven of my colleagues in North Sandhurst County here in the annual Mayor Shamrock Charity Ball, which is a charitable event to benefit the Gally Shelter Workshop, which is just over the border here in Hazelwood. So we had eight mayors, which is the first time they've had that many. All the proceeds go to help the workers who have intellectual and physical disabilities and provided a place to work. So we had a nice turnout of about 400 for that, very pleased to participate in. Likewise, the election is April the 4th, next Friday, the Senior Services Coordinating Commission is going to have a forum. They have a lunch started, it's noon, and they will go to 1 o'clock with the lunch, and then immediately after lunch, candidates are invited to attend and make a five-minute presentation. This is not a debate, it is merely a forum in which the individual candidates can address those in attendance, give a little background about themselves and why they're running for office. Anyone that would like to come, it's up at the Bridgerton Recreation Center, 1 o'clock is when it'll open up to the entire public, the luncheon is not performed. So, anybody that would like to come up, uh, there's no questions in the audience because of the time constraints. So, anyone that would like to do that, they're more than welcome to come up. With that, I'll take a motion for a German.
So move.
Second.
Motion made to adjourn by councilmember Hood, seconded by councilmember Patel. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Motion carried. We are a German, thank you very much for attending.